Good evening, staff, fellow councilors, public. Thank you for joining us tonight. First of all, acknowledge with gratitude that we are gathered on the ancestral unceded territory of the Subassit people who have stewarded these lands for millennia. I'm going to call this meeting to order with some late items. If you will, under business arising, place the APC Code of Conduct, which you just received prior to the meeting. Also, under new business B, never mind, I'm going to change the mayor's report to public relations, so anyone has any public relations, we'll add that there. Under notices of motion, World Cleanup Day from councillor Sandu. And in addition to in-camera, under section 91(c), labour relations or other employee relations. So with those, are there any more looking to staff? I think I've added enough for you, haven't I? Councilors? Okay, looking for approval, the agenda is amended. Moved by councillor Austin, seconded by councillor Frisby. All in favor? Opposed, if any? That motion carries. Now it's time for public input. Public input is for agenda items only. If you have anything on tonight's agenda that you wish to speak to, if you could please come up to the podium and just state your name and the topic you wish to speak to. Seeing no one, I will look for adoption of minutes. We have the minutes of the regular meeting of council, which was held April 22, 2025. Moved by councillor Sandu, seconded by councillor Frisby. Any errors or omissions that anyone sees? Call a question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That motion carries. The second set of minutes is from a special meeting of council held on May 6, 2025. Moved by councillor Sandu, seconded by councillor Frisby. Discussion on those? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Moving on to business arising. You've just been handed the APC Proposed Code of Conduct. Looking for some input on this subject. Councillor Sandu.
Thank you, Mayor. So this was brought up at the APC meeting a few months ago, and the majority of the members supported a code of conduct within the APC. So there's principles and standards of conduct. There's four foundational principles that form a standard of conduct applicable to appointed members: integrity, accountability, respect, leadership, and collaboration. Then another part is conflict of interest, acceptance of gifts, and complaint procedures. So similar to council's code of conduct, it would just be, if council approves it, it would go the next APC meeting in June, and that that's where it'd be presented for the APC members.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Councillor Frisby, please.
Just referring to the minutes from the last APC meeting where they voted against the code of conduct. Am I clear on that one? Did they vote against? One person voted against. Okay, so this is still on the table. And then through to mayor or staff, has there not been this precedent set to appointed members of committees before?
Has there come to any previous APC committees in the past, like a code of conduct?
And if I may, I believe there is a code of conduct for council and a code of conduct for staff. I'm not sure if we have implemented that into commissions or committees or standing committees at this point, but that could be amended into the policy, I'm sure, to include any commissions or appointees representing the town to also sign off on the code of Any other questions or comments? Are you willing to accept this tonight, or would you like to refer it for further discussion? You were called.
So sorry, at the last APC meeting, the commission rescinded the February 27 motion that a code of conduct applied to Advisory Planning Commission. It was moved by Bill Garrett and was seconded by Stephanie Harper. It's rescinding the motion. Do we know anything about that? I am referring to a draft APC from the last meeting. Does anyone remember this? Okay, disregard.
Thank you. And I think the rescinding of the motion was rescinding that they do not accept the code of conduct. That would be my take on those minutes. Councillor Vamaka, I didn't recognize you with your new haircut.
Oh, thank you. So can we refer this back to the CAO to make sure that we're within our rights to ask for a code of conduct and to come back with one for us?
Just through the chair, clarification, you're asking for the, just for the Advisory Planning Commission or other committees of council?
I think councillor Vamaka was hoping to refer it back to staff for input.
Certainly, we can review it, yes.
Are you moving referral?
Yes, if I can get a second.
There's a second here. Now on the propriety of referral, please. I have councillor Vamaka first. Councillor Sandu.
Well, just maybe clarity through the CVRD if their APCs signed code of conduct, because I recall a conversation at the table with another member of our commission that also sits on the APC for the CVRD. So I recall her saying that they signed code of conduct.
I believe that to be the case, but that would be a simple phone call or email just to clarify. So on the referral, any further propriety of the referral motion? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? And that was to refer back to staff to check out the legality of commissions or appointed members adhering to a code of conduct. Moving on, delegations and representations. I recognize this name. Mr. Ross Forrest is here on behalf of the Couch Lake Community Forest Cooperative as regarding the loading zone in front of 75 South Shore Road. Mr. Forrest, if you could come to the podium, push the microphone. Yes, we're in the 21st century now. Push the button.
Move the light on now? Now you can hear me? Okay, first of all, thank you for including the Couch Lake Community Forest Co-op on the agenda for tonight. Unfortunately, our chairperson couldn't be here, so I've been delegated to speak on the Forest Co-op's behalf tonight. So last week, it came to our attention after the fact regarding a temporary use permit application for 89 South Shore Road that would negatively affect our operation. This property is some distance from our property, which is 75 South Shore Road. You know, it's probably, I don't know, a good 100 meters or 150 meters away. The permit was granted to the applicant with the condition that they establish a loading zone and provide loading zone signs in front of our building on only the parking lot that is in front of our, on 75 South Shore Road. It would certainly be an inconvenience to our business, as we have two driveways, but there's only the one parking spot on the street in front, and we're pretty restricted there for parking ourselves. And we are the ones that pay the commercial taxes for that, and you're giving that spot away to somebody else, which is, you know, understanding is a provincial road and, you know, how you could do that with... Anyhow, we're pretty disappointed that council's decision on this matter and that we received no, you know, as a property owner there who is affected by it, we received no notification. You just went ahead and did it. So, you know, it definitely affects us and neighboring properties. So we have a commercial property, and in no way do we wish the loading zone to be in that spot in front of our building. And hopefully you'll be able to find it with yourselves to rescind the resolution that you passed there last week. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Like I say, it's pretty disappointing that you guys would make a decision like that without, like I say, contacting us as the property owners that are really affected by this. You know, just luckily, luckily Lauren, our chairperson, came across it and spotted that this had happened, and so we have a chance to at least come this week tonight. So we appreciate this opportunity and hope you could look at changing your decision on this.
Okay, as you know, delegations, we do not make a decision at a delegation representation. But if there's any clarifying questions, councillor Frisby.
Yeah, you did mention that you had two driveways there, and I noticed the curbs not cut down for the second driveway. Was there approval given for that second driveway? Because that also takes away parking space.
I wasn't on the building committee. Maybe Dale or Richard, who are on the building committee, could mention that or answer that?
The second driveway that was put in that doesn't have, yeah, that doesn't have the curb cut down, was there approval given for that, or is it, there was, by the town? It's not chipped away yet there, right? Okay. Just through to staff, is that your agreement as well, that we're chipping out the curb for a second driveway? Okay.
Councillor Austin.
Thank you. I agree with Ross, and putting that loading zone in front of a different business is not correct. I don't see why we couldn't do the first two parking spots at Saywell as you drive in on the left and have those as two loading zones, drop in, you know, 15 minute or whatever, because people can use that when they're picking up food and going to the bakery and stuff like that as well. And that way, the daycare people could use that without taking away parking on South Shore, which is a public road under MOTI. And I don't think we have the right to do a loading zone in front of a business like that.
Anyone else? Councillor Vamaka.
Thank you. Yeah, when I read the South Shore, my apologies, I wasn't looking at the actual address and seeing it's put in front of the Forest Co-op for the benefit of the daycare. So I think if it's going to be a loading/unloading for daycare, it should be put in front of the actual building that the daycare is in. It's not fair to the neighbors to have to take on the extra traffic and the extra parking. So if we can, you know, look back of sending it to staff, I would like to see that corrected if we could. So my apologies.
Anyone else? So there were a number of other conditions within, I'm sorry councillor Sandu, I'm going to override you and speak as the chair. Oh, I'll pay for this later. There were a number of other conditions aside from the parking drop-off in the TUP. We have not heard back on those conditions yet, but certainly understand your concerns. And I think there will be probably a motion to send this back to staff, but I'm not going to preclude that before I talk to councillor Sandu.
Thank you, Mayor McGonigal. I would just like to make a motion to refer this back to staff.
No, sorry. Bridget, I mean, Ms. Reynolds?
Thanks. Just if I can provide a bit more information, I know the, the, the condition to put the loading zone was based upon the original TUP that was issued in 2020, I think it was. So we just carried that forward. The approval of, of the TUP is, I think, somewhat time limited, because I know the operator is wanting to move. I think it's sort of for the beginning of June. So perhaps if it's possible that that, the TUP could be issued, but the loading zone is sort of resolved after, I think would be of great benefit to the daycare operator for information.
So if we've put this through to staff, then it's a delay to the daycare? Is that correct? Opening, or?
Well, because you, I would assume then that council would want to report back before you issue the sign off on the TUP, although the TUP was approved at the last council meeting. So, yeah, back in 2019, it was approved. There were a number of conditions, including, yeah, the, the drop off or the loading zone was one of those conditions. And so the timeliness is, I know, important for the operator.
Councillor Vamaka.
Councillor Sandu. So, I'm sorry, Bridget, so when the original daycare was for before and after-school children, which there was only, I believe, six children. And so then that was when that parking spot was put as a loading/unloading in front of the Forest Co-op, which at the time, and you were never there. Now they are there, so it's impacting their business. But now there's in the neighborhood of, I believe, 20-something children being picked up and dropped off. So now it is something that needs to change with their temporary use permit. But I thought was under the understanding when we gave the temporary use permit at the last meeting, it was also dependent on island health, a fire inspection, and also a building inspector inspection to make sure that that property was adequate for a full-time daycare of 30 children versus six.
The, the building permit issues had been resolved previously, and as part of VHA's review, it, prior to the town being able to issue a business license, there's sort of a bit of a circle that the town has to issue the business license, and then VHA would then approve the license. So we can't, the town can't approve the business license after VHA approves it. It has to be done before, because VHA, VHA's the one who's, is the sort of the ultimate regulator on daycare use. And if they determine that the site is not suitable, they would not issue a license.
Councillor Austin.
I think so. But which property, if they were issued a license two or three years ago, it wouldn't have been for the same property they're going to now. It would have been the other property across the street.
No, it was for the one, the one that they're requesting, they've requested the TUP for.
And it was cleared back then?
Yep, in 2019.
I still think we have to do, get the parking issue settled separately. It won't stop them from opening if they're allowed to open, but they'll just have to use other sources.
As I said, we're not going to make a decision tonight with a delegation, but we've had considerable discussion, and I think staff has heard the concerns of council and of the property owner, and if we could move forward in a timely manner for both the possible daycare placement there and appeasing some of the parking issues. I didn't see this come forward in the parking study, anticipating that there would be a drop-off zone for daycare or other aspects of business entities. So it's, it's interesting that this has propped up with the movement of the daycare from one side of the street to the other. The original building was a temporary daycare for, as was said by councillor Vamaka, four or five children, was an independent daycare. And the one that has moved from across the street is a business entity. So there is a little bit of difference in the amount of people that are accommodating that parking spot. With that, thank you very much for your time today.
Okay, I just want to conclude by saying that, you know, the Forest Co-op began a property search two years ago, and we wanted a property in the town. And, you know, we purchased this property, spent a lot of money to renovate it to a standard that was much higher than that property was before. I think anybody that's been here for a while would agree that it was a bit of an eyesore before. And, you know, we, we considered a lot, the appeal that it would have to the community. And, and I think we've established that. So I just want to put that in the back of your head, and, you know, like I say, the Couch Lake Community Forest Co-op is asking council to please reverse your decision on this. It is going to be a hindrance to our operations there. So thank you for your time, and appreciate you hearing. Thanks.
Thank you. And when this does, full disclosure, when this does come back for consideration, I will be removing myself from those discussions as the vice chair of the Forest Co-op, and I will leave that decision to the remainder of my councilors.
I mean, if I, if I could speak to that, I mean, I know that, you know, there could be a bit of a conflict there, but we have another councillor that's also on the Forest Co-op, and we have another councillor that is the alternate on there. So how are you going to have a quorum to decide that if you're stepping away from that? You guys found it within yourselves to vote on this a month ago, to vote on our property, and now that it's come to the tension that we're not happy about it, you want to recuse yourself? I have some concerns about that, so.
I appreciate that, but I have to oblige by the local government act and the community charter. If I feel that I am in conflict, I must at least state it publicly, so I have done that. I appreciate your comments, and staff has heard both sides, and we'll move forward. On correspondence, Kinsman Club of Lake Couchin, this is a request for a beer garden at Lake Days 2025. Staff wish to speak to this?
No, Ms. Mayor, I think the, the application is in line with previous years, so.
Councillor Vamaka.
So I'd have to move first that we're going to give permission for the annual Lake Days Beer Garden on Saturday, June 14, from noon to 6 p.m. in Saywell Park. We will be, and with a proper business, a liquor licensory. And can we also stipulate that the fencing part, but it's not in here? Okay.
So that's moved. Do I have a second? Seconded by councillor Sandu. Any further discussion? So any previous conditions within beer gardens in the past on that location would be adhered to as well in this application? Security, fencing, and that sort of analogy? Okay? All in favor? Opposed? That motion carries? Thank you. And international exchange personnel in Doughte City for the 36th year. That's just for information. If you wish to speak to it, if not, we'll move on. Yes, I don't have that email in front of me. If you can bring it up. So I need a motion to move that Mr. Walters, Mr. Caden Neil Walters, be appointed as the English teacher in Otaki, Doughte City, working term to be September 1, 2025 to July 31, 2026. Someone move that? Moved by councillor Austin, seconded by councillor Vamaka, because she showed me the email. Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, if any? That motion carries? Council and committee reports. Committee of the whole, councillor Frisby.
I'd like to move the following minutes from the committee, the whole meeting from Tuesday, May 13. The committee recommends the Town of Lake Couchin authorize the Solid Waste Management Service Agreement between the town and the CVRD. The committee recommend approval of the Lake Couchin Fire Department's incident report in the amount of $11,487.39 for April 2025. The committee recommends that staff be directed to provide alternative amendments to the zoning bylaw for consideration by council to allow for the standards for single detached and duplex dwellings in the traditional urban R3 zone to be similar to the regulations that exist, existed prior to November 24, 2024 zoning bylaw amendments. The committee recommend the Town of Lake Couchin property maintenance and the prohibit, can't get that word up, prohibition, prohibition of unsightly premises bylaw amendment, bylaw number 10502021 to be amended with the inclusion of the Himalayan blackberries are noxious weed with the consideration of the amending bylaw to be brought forward for council consideration, which I think is tonight. The committee recommends that council approve a leave of absence for councillor Vamaka for the meeting held that day, and we had one notice of motion, which was councillor Sandu requested, that council chambers sound system issues be investigated.
You're moving those? Seconder, councillor Sandu, any discussion on those? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? That motion carries? Couch and Lake Recreation, I'll stay with you, councillor Frisby.
Yeah, we had a meeting yesterday at the Yuboe Public Hall. We're doing a hall tour of all the ones that are in the commission's purview, I guess. We instructed staff to seek planning for cladding and roofing replacements in the patio area, remaining within the original budget. So for some background, we did approve 1.6 million for the cladding project at the arena. At the time when we were getting prices for that work, it did seem like there was too much money being spent, so we took that area out of it. We have 300,000 left over in that budget, and we have another 150,000 from doors that we can roll into this next project. So they are now looking at that to see if it is economical to proceed. We approved an ice allocation policy to align with other rinks. We discussed a commercial rates policy to align with other rinks as well. And we also approved a five-year lease for the post office boxes to operate at the Honeymoon Bay Hall. The next meeting is in Musachi Lake, and not sure when it is.
Any questions for councillor Frisby? Thank you, that's just for information. Vancouver Island Regional Library, councillor Vamaka.
Thank you. There was an audit and finance committee meeting on May 16 via Zoom. They had a new auditor in place for a year and a half now, and he actually found that many of the projects funded were always coming in over budget, which led to the final financial implications that Verl's facing right now. So sometimes, you know, change is good, because fresh eyes will detect some issues and solutions can be found a lot sooner. So they put new payment terminals into many of the Verl branches, and they now have better rates on the interact machines. And along with that, they have better functioning equipment, so many of the branches are quite excited to be upgraded. The library board is going to help fund a VIU student to come in and to study finance through the VRL system. So auditors suggested that Verl also look at all of their employees' records to make sure that there was compliance. All record of employments were filed there to make sure there were no past employees such as temporary positions that were still on the payroll as far as paperwork was concerned, and that they were all removed. And any outstanding benefits and pay paid out to all the past employees were all up to date, and everything was signed up on. So a new auditor came in and said, you... So a new auditor came in and said you should tidy up a lot of these records, make sure everything is up to date and current, which was good. They also brought up that cyber attacks are on the rise, and that the finance department is usually the one being targeted. And so they were saying that the staff should be trained to be able to spot any of these spams and cyber attacks that are coming through. And so the next regular meeting of the library board is going to be on June the 7th. Thank you.
Questions to councillor Vamaka? Seeing none, moving on to the area planning commission, councillor Sandu.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next, our meeting for this Thursday, May 29th, is canceled. Our next meeting is June 26th.
Thank you for that. Community Forest Co-op, the past month saw the Forest Co-op place funds in a number of organizations throughout the community, aside from the large donation to the Couchin Valley Hospital Auxiliary Association. These varied from the salmon enhancement project to Janay Weir as ambassador for BC. There were sufficient funds provided to eight opportunities, and looking forward to future grants coming forward. As always with every other grant system, it was oversubscribed and underfunded. So we know how that works at this table. There is considerable good work being done by the Forest Co-op Board with the logging operation in conjunction with Pachi dot First Nation. So looking forward to future grants coming forward and opportunities to enhance communities in the West Couchin and Couchin Valley as a whole. With that, other reports? I have nothing to report on the Couchin Valley Regional District Board. Community outreach team, councillor Austin.
Thank you. I did send all the minutes off to everyone, and there's an awful lot going on at community services. Theater group, youth leadership groups, Wild and Well Group, Early Years Play Group, the Listening Space, and a support circle for gender diverse youth. There's also quite a bit going on with the Couchin Lake Recreation Commission. They have lifeguards now for a beautiful speech Monday to Friday. Job postings are out, and they're going to be at the Canada Day event in Musachi on July 1st, and Bay Days July 12th. The library has family storytime on Fridays. They're very busy with organizations learning, working to change hours and shifts, and summer reading club. And there's lots going on with the Couchin Lake Community Services. They have many, many things going on right now. So there's a lot in the community that people just need to connect and check out their website and Facebook page.
Thank you. Any questions to councillor Austin? Thank you for that. Looking to our Couchin, nothing to report. Couchin Watershed Board, councillor Sandu.
Thank you, Chair. We held our meeting yesterday in Duncan, and we had an update on the challenging summer ahead, is what the forecast is. All the monitoring gear is in place on the river. There is three new added systems in the upper Couchin River, so we'll be monitoring our end closer this year. They have started their weekly calls again with the Town of Lake Couchin, CVRD, Couchin Tribes, DFO, Ministry of Water, Land Resource Stewardship. And Ken Ashley has agreed to give support to the Couchin Watershed Board again this summer regarding the drought. And we, the Couchin Watershed Board officially has a office, and the grand opening is July 18th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and the address is 55 Station Street in Duncan. July 28th, we'll be celebrating the 15th year of the Couchin Watershed Board, which is quite a milestone. And yesterday at our meeting, there were a few people that spoke that they've been attending different conferences in the interior, and our local Couchin Watershed Board is always a topic of discussion at these conferences. So we're well known within BC, and we're getting well known within Canada on what this organization is doing. So it's something to be really, really proud of. And the Upper River, or sorry, the Lower River Cleanup is dated for August 24th, 2025, and the Upper River Cleanup is slated for September 14th. And our next meeting is July 23rd.
Thank you for that. Questions to councillor Sandu? Moving on, Otaki 20, councillor Frisby, anything there?
Nothing to report at the moment. I know that the students are working through basic phases and phrases to travel with, but that's all to report at the moment.
And how's your Japanese?
I am on Duolingo every day, so we'll see how it goes.
Councillor Austin.
I'll just mention the 2026 group meeting is Monday, June 2nd at 6:00 in the upper Couchin, or community, I can't even say it, country grocer area. And we have at least eight students and maybe about four or five adults that wish to go in 2026.
Thank you for that. Moving on to staff reports. You're going to be busy here, Ms. Reynolds. First one, I will let you introduce that if you wish.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the first one is related to a property at 450 Point Ideal. This was an addition to the existing single-family home that was being constructed in the R2 zone. And as part of the final review, it was noted that the, there was a survey submitted and noted that the addition was encroaching into the setback. And so the request is to reduce the side yard setback, and it actually should read from 1.5 meters to 1.01 or 1 meter, because it's encroaching into the setback 0.4 of the meter, and that would regularize the sighting of the addition. And we didn't hear anything from any of the neighbors, and it seems to be somewhat of a negligible, because it's only one corner of the addition that's in the setback.
Thank you. There is a recommendation there. The contract planner recommends the variance to reduce the side yard setback from 1.5 meters to 1.0?
Yes, I think that's.
For the property legally described as Lot 5, District Lot 13 Couchin Lake District Plan VIP 72607, 450 Point Ideal Road be approved. Someone move that? Moved by councillor Frisby, seconded by councillor Sandu. Questions? Councillor Frisby.
Are the neighbors aware that this is going through this process?
Yes, yeah, the property owner made the application to regularize it.
So, sorry, the neighbor that.
Yes, they were notified.
They were notified? Okay.
That's a requirement under the development approval bylaw.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Vamaka.
Just clarification, you said from 1.5 to 1.0?
Yes.
Because in the recommendation.
I made an error.
So that'll be changed. Okay, thank you.
So with that correction to 1.0, it's been moved and seconded. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed if any? That motion carries. Onto the next one, Ms. Reynolds.
Thank you. So the next one relates to a property at 146 Maplewood Rise, and a number of these upcoming applications relate, they're in the R3 zone, and they have to do with the change, the zoning amendment that was made back in November with implementing the Bill 44. And in this case, the property owner was unaware of the changes to the zoning bylaw, and so had their plans built or developed based upon the existing zoning bylaw. And in this instance, the house is proposed to be sighted at 7.5 meters, but there's a requirement in zoning bylaw that there be a setback between the front face of the house and the garage, that the garage be behind the front face of the house by 1.5 meters. In this instance, the garage is in front of the front face of the, of the house by 1.5 meters, and so they're requesting a variance to that section of the bylaw.
And the recommendation, the contract planner recommends granting the variance request for this application for the property located at 146 Maplewood Rise, legally described as Lot 10, District Lot 48 Couchin Lake District Plan EPP 124621. Vary the subsections F, brackets 1, bracket A of Section 5.1.6. Standards for traditional urban R3 zone as follows. Reduce the minimum setback between the garage face and dwelling front face from 1.5 meters to negative 1.5 meters. Moved by councillor Frisby, seconded by councillor Sandu. Discussion, councillor Frisby?
Was the garage being in front of the house allowed in their previous bylaw?
It was.
Thank you.
Any further comments, questions? All in favor? Opposed if any? That motion carries. Next, Ms. Reynolds.
Okay, now this one is dealing both with zoning bylaw setback, similar issue as well as a development permit for water course and streamside protection development permit area and natural hazard development permit area for the interface fire hazard. So, and the first instance, the property is a large property, 3.5 meters, or excuse me, 3.5 acres in size, and it is, they're proposing to build a single-family residence. Again, the, with the zoning setback, the, in this instance, the building is sighted well inside the setback, it's more than 16 meters from the front lot line, so meets the setback. But again, their proposal, again, had plans, or plans developed without knowing the change in the bylaw, and so in this case, their garage and front face of the dwelling are flush, so they don't meet that 1.5 meter setback. As far as the development permit area issues, they, the Streamside Protection DP, they have obtained a riparian area assessment and recommendations in that, by the qualified environmental professional, provide some conditions of approval that as, and then the interface fire hazard development permit area, they provided an older assessment, and the fire chief reviewed that and recommended a subsequent review. Be prepared by the qualified professional, the qualified forester professional, and the applicant has advised me that that's underway. So the, again, the results of the interface fire hazard report would form conditions of the development permit.
This is a long one.
Oh, and just if I may add, there were two letters that were submitted, and I passed those off to you, from neighbors who were expressing, who were responding to the variance notice that they received, but they aren't really, they're not speaking to the actual variance request. One of them is concerned with not being able to, with the development of the property and, you know, the impacts to wildlife and so on on that property, and another one is concerned with the view, which again, they're not really related to the variance request.
Thank you for that clarification. So the contract planner recommends granting the variance request and development permit for the property located at the end of Joel Road, legally described as Lot 20, District Lot 48 Couchin Lake District Plan 34628 as follows. To vary the zoning bylaw subsection B, bracket 1 of Section 5.1.6, standards for traditional urban R3 zone as follows. Reduce the minimum setback between the garage face and front face of the dwelling from 1.5 meters to 0 meters. And number two, all development should be in accordance with the riparian area assessment report prepared by Paul Crandall of Sword Fern Environmental dated April 2nd, 2025, and the wildfire assessment prepared by Strathcona Forestry Consultant dated September 13, 2021. With A, prior to issuance of the building permit, submit a report prepared by a professional with experience in wildfire assessments confirming the recommendations in the wildfire assessment have been incorporated into the development of the property. Someone like to move that? Moved by councillor Sandu, seconded by councillor Frisby. Discussion on that one? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed if any? Motion carries. Number four.
Okay, so we have another request, again, relating to the R3 zone, and this is for the property at 153 Elk. This, for this instance, it is related to duplex, and there are two standards that the applicant is requesting. One of the new regulations that were implemented with, implementing Bill 44, had to do with offsetting the duplex units, so by 1.5 meters, so that they're set back from each other. And the intent of that is to try to reduce the massing of the building, so we don't end up with a big box. And so again, this is another applicant who kind of got caught unknowingly about the changes to the bylaw, and so the request is related to the minimum setback between the two units, which requires 1.5 meter setback, and in this instance, it's flush. And then also the other setback between the front face of the dwelling unit and the front face of the garage, again, as with the single-family unit, the setback is intended to be, the garage is intended to be at 1.5 meters back from the front face of the house, the dwelling unit. And in this case, the, this one, yeah, so this, if you look, you can see on the site plan for this one, it's all on, it's meeting the 7.6 meter setback, or 7.5 meter setback is what was required under the old bylaw, and you'll see that it's all flush, the two units and the garage is the front face.
Thank you. So the recommendation is the contract planner recommends granting the variance request for this application for the property located at 153 Elk Road, legally described as Lot 7, Lot 12, Section 5, Brenfrew District Plan EPP 129725. Vary the subsections B, brackets 1 of Section 5.1.6, standards of traditional urban R3 zone as follows. Reduce the minimum front face differential setback for the front face of individual units from 1.5 meters to 0 meters. And B, reduce the minimum setback between the garage face and dwelling's front face from 1.5 meters to 0 meters. Someone like to move that? Councillor Vamaka, seconded by councillor Frisby. Any discussion on that one? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed if any? That motion carries. Next.
Thank you. So this is an application for 154 Maplewood Rise. Similarly, or in this instance, we're talking about single-family residents, and it is, in this instance, the setback differential, the, again, the garage is in the, in front of the front face of the dwelling. In this instance, though, the dwelling unit at the closest point is taking advantage of the new setback that was established, but it still doesn't meet the differential between the front face of the dwelling unit and the garage, the offset.
Thank you. So the recommendation from the contract planner for the property located at 154 Maplewood Rise, legally described as Lot 8, District Lot 48 Couchin Lake District Plan EPP 124621, to vary the subsection B, bracket 1 of Section 5.1.6, standards for traditional urban R3 zone as follows. Reduce the minimum setback between the garage face and dwelling front face from 1.5 meters Reduce the minimum setback between the garage face and dwelling front face from 1.5 meters to negative 1.5 meters. Someone move that? Counselor Austin, seconded by Counselor Sandu. Discussion on this one? Counselor Frisbee?
So, just for clarification, so, the owners of this property were aware of the new setbacks as far as going towards the property lines, but they're unaware. So, we've got a mix of both being aware of it and having the garage in front of the house.
Well, the thing was that the building plans were already, had been prepared, and what they did end up doing was moving it forward because they could. But to go back and to have new plans designed would have been at some time and some expense. But moving it forward on a site plan was pretty easy to do.
Just a follow-up if I may. So, with the garage in front of the house, we're still not encroaching on the new setbacks we've had. It's still within the...
It's not at seven and a half, which is what was, would have been required.
Yeah. But it's at the new setback.
Right. So, it still meets the zoning bylaw for that, yeah.
Thank you.
Any further? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion carries. Last one, Ms. Reynolds.
Alrighty. So, the last one is a development permit with regards to a natural hazard, property within the natural hazard development permit area for both steep slopes and for interface fire. Because I'm sure, as council is aware, the whole of the town is in the high interface fire hazard zone. So, the property owners, it's currently an undeveloped lot. They did provide a geotechnical assessment as well as stormwater plan to confirm that the development, the construction is safe for the intended use, and that any mitigation or any risk associated with the steep slope can be adequately mitigated. With regards to the interface fire hazard, they're still in the process of getting that report completed, but we didn't see any harm with bringing it forward at this time, knowing that there's the opportunity to reduce, to mitigate the hazard for the interface fire can be done through the report, through certain building materials, and ensuring that fire smart methods are adhered to as they construct and develop. And so, that would be a condition of issuing the development permit would be that the interface fire hazard report be brought back to council, or, sorry, be submitted to staff prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Thank you for that. So, the contract planner recommends approving DP 2025-02 for the property located at 287 Casly Heights legally described Lot 14, Section 5, Brenfrew District Plan VIP 54940, subject to the following conditions. First bullet, all development shall be in accordance with geotechnical hazard assessment prepared by Lukowich Engineering Limited dated May 14, 2025, and stormwater management plans prepared by Lukowich Engineering Limited dated May 9, 2025. And second bullet, prior to issuance of the building permit, submit a report prepared by a professional with experience in wildfire assessments, shall be provided with recommendations to reduce the fire hazard to moderate or low, and such recommendations shall be incorporated into the development of the property. Second bullet in that, a safe harmless Section 219 covenant that includes the geotechnical hazard assessment prepared by Lukowich Engineering Limited dated May 14, 2025, shall be registered on the certificate of title of the subject property. Moved by Counselor Vomaka, seconded by Counselor Frisbee. Any further discussion on this one? Call the question, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Thank you very much for those, Ms. Reynolds. Appreciate that. Moving on to bylaws, the Town of Lake Couch and Property Maintenance and Unsightly Premises Amendment Bylaw, number 1120-2025, may be read a first, second, and third time. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was pointed out in the committee, the whole minutes, from May 13, the recommendation of this committee was that the Town of Lake Couch and Property Maintenance and their Prohibition of Unsightly Premises Bylaw, Amendment Bylaw number 1050-2021, to be amended with the inclusion of the Himalayan blackberry as a noxious weed, with the consideration of the many bylaw to be brought forward for council consideration. That's the bylaw for, before you, and it's recommended for first, second, and third reading.
So, having that in front of you, moved by Counselor Sandu, seconded by Counselor Frisbee. Discussion on this one? Call the question, all in favor of first, second, and third reading? Opposed, if any? That motion carries. Under New Business, A, 2025 UBCM Meeting Requests for Ministers and MACC. Looking for direction? Sorry.
As stated in the agenda, there was a number of items that council had wished that we recommend for ministry appointments, and we're waiting for council direction to provide to staff, then we can begin to make those appointments on your behalf.
So, I believe we had brought forward a couple of topics that we wished to discuss. Do you recall those, Counselor Austin? One was the minister responsible for housing on a subject property, AB Greenwell, and clarification on a second minister?
Minister Forrest, Rabie Kalon.
Minister Forrest Lands Resources, Walrus. Walrus. And there was another one that we wished, Minister of Health, on the need for a community health clinic within the West Couch and area. Continue on that discussion. I believe those were the two that I recall. Anyone else remember anything? Counselor Sandu?
I'm just wondering if I could bring forward email counsel and the CEO tomorrow, a name, just talking with the watershed board, a few of the professionals. They want to kind of do a little bit of research today to, regarding our Seward Lagoon project, and whatever ministry they think would be beneficial for us to have the discussion of moving forward with the Seward Lagoon and what we need to do, whatnot. Is that making sense?
So, that would be the Ministry of Environment, I would think. Mr. Brown?
Yes, through the chair. What staff will do is look at the subject matter, and we'll determine in consultation with the UBCM staff which ministries and/or ministry staff is most appropriate. It might be a multitude.
So, regarding our Seward Lagoon project?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think those three, and Counselor Frisbee.
There was some discussion a while ago when we had a problem property about meeting with a minister on are there riparian zone governance, like what policies we can bring into place so that we have some teeth in this issue? I don't know if the appetite's still there from council, but I think with a couple of properties in question, it might be worthwhile.
I think we did have a tag team meeting with the Couch and Valley Regional District at the last UBCM regarding that, not only within the municipality, but the adjacent electoral areas having some concerns with that, too. We can certainly re-approach that as a single entity with our concerns within the municipality. So, that would be riparian zone infractions within the municipality and the appropriate ministry of that. Okay? Thank you very much. Fast writer, Mr. Brown?
If I could add something further to the discussion, I know in other jurisdictions, the municipalities and the regional district kind of put their heads together after this is done. And if there's similar requests, if council so wishes, we could arrange for meetings jointly with either other municipalities within the regional district, or the regional district itself, or all of us. So, there's generally strength in numbers, and if we're thinking of putting forward requests for similar items, then we could work together as a team. So, I could talk to my fellow CAOs and arrange that.
Perfect. And I think there was some discussion on putting a resolution forward to try to ban unsafe sunscreens within the province, so we'll be looking on that coming forward as a resolution as well, I believe. Anything else? I think we've filled your plate. Okay, moving on. Under B, the code of conduct for the APC was already dealt with. World Cleanup Day is a notice of motion. Would you just like to give a brief overview?
Thank you. So, World Cleanup Day is actually September 20, but Lady Diane from the Couch and River Stewardship Society approached myself and the Chamber of Commerce to do a Town of Lake Couch and cleanup. And so, the date that was picked is, if approved, is Sunday, September 14, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There would be six managed litter pickup stations on the north side of the bridge, the south side of the bridge, so different areas, just in public locations. And the river stewardship is applying for grants just to offset any cost, like for advertising, equipment, whatever. So, if there is approval on this at our next meeting, then I'll discuss further what's required from the Town of Lake Couch and.
Thank you very much. So, that's just a notice of motion going to the next committee, the whole. Any discussion on that? So, I'm going to open up to public relations, if anyone has anything that they would like to add. Counselor Austin?
Thank you. This Saturday from 9:00 a.m. is the Fire Smart Paulson Friendship Forest Cleanup Day. We all meet at the Fire Hall at 9:00 and head off to the Friendship Forest, which we've been trying to clean up for years. It's been a collaboration. I've helped a little bit, but Elijah has done the major work here getting everybody organized. There's going to be hot dogs and things in the afternoon, along with ice cream as well, after everybody's worn themselves out with cutting all the bad stuff that's in there, English Holly, Scotch broom, Daphne, spurge laurel, dead branches, and things like that to clean up, because it is a fire hazard, and we've been after them for many years to try and get it done, and she has organized it. So, I'm hoping people will show up. There will be a draw for a prize, and Angela will be there also from Island Health regarding heat dome and how to stay healthy during the hot summer for people, especially those who live alone. So, it's a good community event if everybody can try and come. Bring your clippers and your gloves.
Thank you. Counselor Vomaka, next.
Thank you. Just to recognize that June is Pride Month, which is very near and dear to my heart, and I'd like to thank our superintendent for assuring that our flag will be ready to be put up on the mast in June. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. Just on one note, Counselor Vomaka is leaving us tomorrow. Not permanently, just, that's why there was a pause. Attending Federation of Canadian Municipalities on our behalf, and she will be reporting back upon her return as to what monies she secured from different ministries. I thought she would be best to do that, aside from me, probably have more clout. But wish you safe travels and look forward to your report on the way back. Also, if you look across the street at the Seniors 50-plus Activity Center, the new mural there, I think, is looking quite good. That was one of the first ones that were brought forward in the new mural policy, and I think that does great aspects of sighting for that building. And there's also one going up at Little Town Pizza as we speak. So, the mural policy is in place, and beautification is helping throughout the town. With that, anyone else on public relations? Counselor Sandu?
Well, we have lake days coming up in two and a half weeks, so, June 9th to 15th. On Monday, June 9th, the Strawberry Tea will be hosted at the Lower Centennial Hall at 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, June 8th, is the Opportunity Night at the Upper Centennial Hall at 6:00 p.m. Saturday, again, we have the Breakfast on the Town at the Lake Couch and Fire Hall, 7:30 a.m. The parade starts at 11:00 a.m. We will be having romper room climbing wall, inflated fun bouncy castles, face painting, music bingo, kids' relays, the Beer Garden, live music from our local musicians, Nathan Anderson and Mary Egan. There'll be the Best Dressed Pet Parade, kids' Best Decorated Bike Parade, and then at 4:00 p.m., the Couch and Lake Ambassador crowning, and 4:00 p.m., the raffle, and then at 6:00 p.m. is the Town Barbecue. And tickets are on sale right now at the Town Office, $12. There's 300 tickets only printed, so if you want one, don't wait.
Thank you for that. Anything further? That's a lot of public relations. So, for next, it's question period. If there's anyone watching online that wishes to call in, the phone number is 250-749-3239. It's 250-749-3239. For those in attendance, if you wish a question, please state your name. Make sure that it is a question and not a comment or other items. We're looking for questions on the agenda as presented and discussed today. Moving to the podium.
My name is Bill Garrett. I live on Lake Park Road here in town. My question is to the CEO for the bylaw that was passed tonight for the yard maintenance and that type of thing. Is the intent of that bylaw to cover all properties in town, such as Bearland Strata?
Through the chair, the bylaw is all inclusive throughout the municipality, yes.
I wonder, because last year, I've got a property in my strata that has been vacant for three years now and has totally overgrown. I tried to get the fire department to deal with it as a fire hazard, and they told me that because it's a strata, they won't even look at it. And we need a bylaw that covers everything, seeing as to me, town is the senior authority.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think bylaws do encompass all properties, strata, or fee simple, within the municipal boundaries. It's just a matter of getting bylaw enforcement to have compliance. Appreciate the question. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'm sorry, if you want to come up to the microphone, please, just state your name and what your question is.
Hi, my name is Andy Gore. I'm here representing Couch and Pride Society. We have our kickoff event happening May 31st at Red Arrow Brewery, and several other events happening throughout June. I am up here today to query whether there can be some kind of support in terms of getting people access to Dunkin' who do not drive due to the transit strike. So, I was here to check in with the Town Council and Erin Frisbee, because I know that you have some buses through the Tube Shack, whether there might be some supports that people who live around the lake, and particularly in Lake Couch and, because I know the bus strike has affected many people here, specifically in town, myself included, to create a little bus service to get people to and from our pride events.
Appreciate that question. If you will reach out offline, perhaps in an email, and try the correspondence that way, we'll see if anyone is willing to accommodate your request.
I will do that. And my second question is just around a little bit of decoration during the month of Pride, whether it might be possible just to use very simple color-coded and kind of tapes that can be taken down as just a temporary thing to create a tape rainbow across the top of the pedestrian bridge instead of a permanent installation that's expensive, like a crosswalk and the Couch and Pride Society. like a crosswalk, and the Couch and Pride Society can cover the cost of that.
Okay, I will send that over to our Superintendent of Public Works for consideration. If you will reach out to him as well.
Great.
That would be appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? So now we need a motion to go in camera. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one question. A Blake Bergen local resident. My question is about parking on the streets. I noticed recently that there's a lot of travel trailers and RVs parked on the sides of the streets, and is there a timeframe that they're allowed to be parked?
In the main downtown and uptown core, there is a two-hour parking limit, as signage is placed throughout on residential streets. I'm not positive as to what the regulations are implemented in in the bylaw within that.
Yes, there's been several that have been parked for days. My concern is that when you're crossing a street and you've got a huge travel trailer, it blocks your vision.
Appreciate that. If 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 there are concerns, please forward them to our staff, and they can be looked into, and if they are impeding vision, et cetera, we can do something about that.
And how long will it take for a response?
As soon as possible.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nothing further? Okay, now we will have the reason for going in camera. So the reason for going in camera is section 92 of the community charter requires that before a meeting or part of a meeting is closed to the public, the council must state by resolution that the meeting is to be closed. And B, the basis on which the meeting is to be closed falls under the following following sections of the community charter. First one is section 91E under land matters, and the second one is under section 91C, labor relations or other employee relations. Motion to go in camera? Moved by Councilor Sandu, seconded by Councilor Vomaka. All in favor? Opposed, if any? Take a short break.